Okay Chairman, we're now live streaming.
Chairman, you're on mute.
Right, sorry. Welcome everyone to this special virtual meeting. Before I start the meeting proper, I want us to take a minute or two to remember our late colleague councillor John Rogers, who was a former chairman of this council, past chairman of planning and a town and county councillor. And I'm going to ask councillor Gordon Banbridge to lead the tribute please. Are you there councillor Banbridge?
Yeah, I was trouble, having trouble unmuteing, I'm on a strange machine. Thank you Linda and thank you for the opportunity. I first met John Rogers very, very soon after being elected to Breckland, which was in May 2003. John was then the chairman of the planning committee and he did have a reputation of a gruff and no-nonsense approach to that particular job. Me of course, as a very new councillor, had to speak in my first meeting within a month of election on a matter which turned out to be the most controversial planning application I've ever seen and it does still raise its heads, including Thursday last week, when it was brought up in a parish meeting in an adjacent village. John, I have to say, despite his reputation, was always willing to give advice and help new members and the advice I took from him that day was how to adopt that very peculiar standard of honesty needed to be an effective councillor in a world where balancing interests is essential. Not all of us get it of course, and those who do will earn the respect of their voters, even those who would normally oppose us. John had that ability in spades and that's why he was so appreciated in his own territory. Those of us who knew and worked with John, and I did from 2003 to 2019, knew that he was always willing to share knowledge, he could be uncompromising and indeed whilst we fell out personally in 2018, that did not affect my views of him as a fellow councillor or as a representative to his ward in Breckland. John of course spent a lifetime in public service, he served on Breckland I think for 28 years, county I think for 20 years, Watton Town Council where he served as mayor as well as those posts that you have already described. He was a man who we could turn to in time of need. He was generous, he gave helpful advice, he would explain options, he would respect your decisions, he was hospitable in his home and he made a good cup of tea, as all former police officers should. A very good man and he will be certainly missed. Thank you.
Thank you Gordon. Is there anyone else who would like to say a few words? Please raise your hand clearly so that Julie Treaser and I can see you. Can't see anyone, so what I would like to ask you to do, we obviously can't stand for a minute silence, so will you please just bow your head and I will time a minute from now. Thank you. Thank you all very much. I have spoken to David, John's son, and there isn't going to be a funeral as such. His dad didn't want that, he's having a direct cremation as indeed Mrs Rogers had only July just gone. So they've had our condolences and we will keep them in our thoughts. Right, I shall start the meeting proper now. Before I take Mr Burt's question, I will ask Julie to do the roll call so that I know who's in the room. Please Julie.
Thank you. Mr Ashby?
Present.
Mr Askew?
Present.
Mr Attawell?
Present.
Mr Banbridge?
Present.
Mr Burt?
Yes, here.
Mr Borat?
Present.
Councillor Bowes?
Yeah.
Mr Brane? Mr Brindle?
Here.
Miss Bushel? Mr Carter? Councillor Marion Chapman Allen?
Yeah.
Mr Sam Chapman Allen?
Present.
Mr Clark?
Present.
Mr Claussen?
Here.
Mr Coleman? Mr Cowan?
Here.
Mrs Crane?
Present.
Mrs Dale?
Present.
Mrs Dowling?
Present.
Mr Duffield? Mr Deigen?
Present.
Mr Eagle?
Here.
Mr Gilbert? Mrs Gray? Mr Harvey?
Present.
Mr Hewitt?
Present.
Mrs James?
Present.
Mr Jeremy?
Here.
Councillor Kiddell? Mr Kittle Morris?
Here.
Mr Kai Bird?
Here.
Mr Ian Martin?
Here.
Mr Keith Martin?
Here.
Mrs Monument? Mr Morton?
Here.
Mr Nen?
He did answer.
I'm here Julie.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm here.
Was that Mr Nun?
Yeah, I'm here.
Mr Oliver? Thank you. Mr Oliver? Mr Robinson?
Present.
Mr Sherwood?
Present.
Mrs Suggatt?
Present.
Mr Terry? Mrs Turner?
Here.
Mrs Webb?
Here.
Mr Wickerson? Mr Wilkin? Mr Wilkinson?
Present Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you Julie. Just before I go to councillor Burt, could I just remind members to switch off your video if you're leaving the room for any reason and to switch it on again when you come back and to stay on mute until you're invited to speak. I will tell you, there is one extra agenda item at the end of the meeting. So I will now go to...
Chairman, before you go any further councillor Taylor has her hand up.
Oh sorry, I'm on a different machine, I can't see. Councillor Taylor?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I wasn't called in the vocal.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, my apologies.
I'm definitely here.
Yes, you're definitely here.
You're definitely here.
Thank you very much. Right. I will take apologies and then councillor Burt. So apologies please Julie.
Chairman, I have apologies from councillor Brane, councillor Gilbert, councillor Terry and councillor Wickerson.
Thank you very much. Councillor Burt, you wish to speak?
Thank you Chairman. I have been in discussion with Mark Stinson over the last couple of days on a number of issues, but I wanted to raise one which is still outstanding, we still haven't actually finally got a definitive legal answer and that is the notice period for these meetings. So far as I can see, it's seven, it's five clear days and the final agenda for this meeting was only published yesterday at, it was only prepared at quarter past six. Now this is really, really relevant when I have on my desk now, on this screen, a document which was dumped on my, just this afternoon and it is a report for the Secretary of State for Education about children's services at West Suffolk Sussex County Council. And on page eight of this, it talks of significant bullying problems and it goes on about perceived to be modeled from the top of the organisation. Now this is relevant because the candidate today that we're considering was the CEO of this organisation at the time. I have not had time to look at this document properly, I dare say nobody else has either, but it is incredibly relevant to what we are looking at today and that is why we have to have sufficient notice period so that we can properly evaluate these matters. There is still time to do this and I suggest that we actually delay this meeting until we have had time to review this properly.
Thank you councillor Burt. Who would like to respond to that one?
Chairman, I'm happy to pick that up.
The start, the starting point Chairman is
councillor Burt is quite correct, five clear working days. But the law does recognise that there are occasions where the full five working days are not possible and there are various exceptions. In this particular case, the report and the agenda was published with the full five clear working days and a revised agenda was published last night with an additional document, i.e. the minutes from the Joint Appointments Committee. And indeed the Local Act 72 does recognise that and it does say that where an item is added to an agenda, the rule is that it must be published at the same time as the revised agenda is published. So that's, that's response to the, to the notice period question. There are slightly different rules for committees and I know that, excuse me councillor Burt is awaiting an outstanding reply on the more general question. But also given councillor Burt's comment at the end of his, his question, I would just like to remind members that we do need to be careful, we're talking about an individual's personal information. I appreciate that some of that information may already be in the public domain, but we are still bound by our data protection rules. So we must be careful if we wish to discuss any of those sorts of issues in detail and I think Chairman it will be necessary to go into exempt session.
Thank you very much Mark. Right. I think the easiest thing to do on this one, councillor Attawell, yes, sorry, I've just seen you waving at me. Do speak.
Thank you Chair. I agree wholeheartedly with councillor Burt on this one. I take on board what Mr Stinson has said, but documents were submitted late yesterday to councillors for consideration. There is, as councillor Burt has alluded to, an awful lot of background information that some of us have been trying to read up on in extremely short notice about this one candidate. I think it's very, very poor form to expect us to form an opinion and do our work as councillors and do our research at such short notice and we'll probably get later on in the meeting to the reason why that has happened that way. But I wholeheartedly suggest and agree Mr Stinson, I think we should go into closed session because there are certainly points about this candidate that I wish to raise and possibly other councillors may wish to speak candidly on this matter rather than speak in the public and I do agree, it would not be fair to the individual to be discussing those things in a public forum on a meeting that the world and his wife can, can watch. So I very much support that, that proposal. If that's what Mr Stinson is suggesting, that we go into closed session to discuss this, I think we need to have that level of candour and we can only do that in closed session.
Thank you Mr Attawell. I just want to take a... Treaser, sorry. Treaser?
Oh, sorry Madam Chairman, I can see that Mark Stinson is ready to respond when you're ready.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest we took a five-minute legal break, but I'll go to Mark first. Mark, wherever you are on my screen.
Chairman, just, just to elaborate slightly on these points, it's common practice in many authorities for a recommendation from one body to a senior body, so from a committee for example to council. They are often on a back-to-back basis and what council is considering is a recommendation from one of its committees that has already investigated a number of these issues. So I think we need to hear from the members of the, the joint committee. And I wasn't advocating necessarily that we go into exempt session, I was really flagging that if members feel that there's a need to discuss that sort of information in detail, then I think we will have to go into exempt session. Otherwise we, you know, we're discussing private confidential personal information in a public forum.
Thank you Mark. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to do the declarations of interest then I'm going to ask for the report to be led by councillor Sam Chapman Allen and then I will make a decision as to whether we stay above or below the line. And I hope that's in agreement with everybody. So can we go to item two please, declarations of interest? Please indicate clearly if you have any interest in the one item.
Hands raised.
Oh, thank you very much. I shall move to item three then, the appointment of the interim head of paid service and ask our leader to present that report please.
Lovely, thank you much Chairman and thank you to colleagues for joining us for this special council meeting this afternoon. The report ahead of you contained from pages three to seven sets out a very clear recommendation from the Joint Appointments and Disciplinary Committee to appoint an interim head of paid service covering both councils. And I'd like to thank councillor Paul Claussen and councillor Mike Brindle for making time yesterday to undertake this important role. The recommendation was 100% unanimous from all of those six participants across both councils in which some very robust questions were asked and the candidates gave some very honest and candid responses and gave confidence to the panel and I think that's reflected Chairman in the fact that it was a unanimous decision. This recruitment has been done through PENA which is a national recruitment organisation in which they supported us through this process in finding the individual who is listed ahead of you today. And just to reassure colleagues across the council that this post is not the post of chief executive but will only be undertaken the statutory function of head of paid service. The main role however, which we recruited for on an interim basis of six months only, is to offer and create the extra capacity within both councils to act as strategic advisors for both authorities on what any possible future models may or may not look like. This role will have no direct line management responsibility over any Breckland or South Holland staff. And the place-based teams led by our two directors, Rob Walker and Maxino Mahoney, will continue and have already absorbed most of the meetings and engagements previously undertaken by our chief executive. Thus, Rob and Max will continue to manage and lead Breckland officers throughout the pandemic and into the near future. This post is an interim post-only chairman, which I reiterate, is for six months. Offering a single day to Breckland and a single day to South Holland. And the recommendations there Chairman are listed as A and B and if it's required Chairman, the only addition to that I would make is to add the fixed six-month appointment. But I'm happy to take any questions or any other comments from my two panel members Chairman, if I've missed anything.
Thank you Leader and I will add in, as chairman of the council, I am assured that under standing order number 58, section 58.2, there have been no material objections from either cabinet or individual members of that cabinet to this appointment. That's important for everyone to know. Right, I will take questions on the content of the leader's report. If at any point I feel it's getting too personal or in-depth, I will take Mark Stinson's advice and then pass a resolution to go under the line. The first hand I can see, I'm relying on officers now to help me with speakers, I've got Mr Brindle?
Correct Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Brindle.
Thank you Madam Chairman. Yes, I did take part yesterday, which was a pleasure and I think the candidate presented himself very well. I think it may help, given what the comments have been made at the beginning of the meeting by councillor Burt and supported elsewhere, if we could be clear about the two different roles that are on offer. My view was that he would make an excellent choice for the job of giving advice. It would perhaps clarify and perhaps encourage councillors if we heard again the specific responsibilities of the title head of paid service. It's been pointed out that he will not line manage anyone, but where is the contact, what is the responsibility and where is the contact with other staff? If we're able to be reassured on that, I think it might encourage colleagues to go ahead with this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, that's a very, very useful suggestion. Will Mark or Max, one of you take that up?
Chairman, the, the statutory role of head of paid service is basically that that individual has a specific power which is to require the council to consider a report if the head of paid service feels that that's necessary in respect of the, the staff employed by the authority. So where for example, the head of the paid service considers that certain changes should be made to the establishment, then the head of the paid service is able to ensure that the council considers a report to that effect. So that ties in quite nicely with the role that I understand this post is intended to have, which I'm sure Maxine or indeed the leader could perhaps repeat or elaborate on.
Thank you very much. Has that helped councillor Brindle?
Thank you. I, I, I hope that that's clear, it's... I would really still like to have a clear statement from Sam or from a senior officer that it's correct to say that, once again, that there is no line management responsibility.
Would an officer or Sam like to respond to that?
Chairman, I'm, I'm happy to, to respond that the interim head of paid service and the interim strategic advisor to both councils will have no line management requirements of any staff at either, at either councils.
Thank you very much. Now, anybody else wish to ask a question or make a comment? Please raise your hand clearly so we can see while we whizz across all the screens. Peter Wilkinson, is that you? Yes, councillor Wilkinson.
Thank you Madam Chairman. My comment is basically really, as a councillor, that we should have confidence in the members of that Joint Appointments and Disciplinary Committee meeting which was held on Wednesday. It is clearly stated in, in the minutes of this meeting that the procedures was followed and numerous questions was put to the candidate and acted and answered satisfactorily. So therefore I feel we should be, have confidence in, in that committee's decision which resolved in recommending to both councils and I accept, accept their decision.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I can't hear you Treaser or Julie.
Councillor Jeremy?
Right. Off you go councillor Jeremy.
Thank you very much Chairman. And just a couple of points if I may and a couple of questions for Sam. And I've sat obviously as a member of the Joint Appointments Panel before and I think it's right in that format that members of that panel assess the suitability of the individuals concerned. I wasn't on that panel on this occasion, but my role here today is to take the recommendation and therefore I'm not going to question the suitability of the candidate, I'll take the recommendation as presented. There's an element of trust and sort of assumption that due diligence has been carried out and I'm happy with that. And I did want to just highlight Sam's point there about interim role. And I had some concerns which I've raised with Sam today and Mark Stinson about the wording of the actual recommendation. And in the body of the report, section 1.1, it specifically refers to an end date being the 31st of March 2021. In the recommendation, it makes no reference to that and so if we adopt it without amending it, we're essentially agreeing as all council to agree to an open-ended appointment. There's no end date. So I do think there should be a, a date put in there and if it's six months from appointment, then that should be included within the body of the recommendation that we vote on. So that's a sort of, sort of technical issue, but I wouldn't think for one minute that we appoint somebody and it never ends. But it should be included within the recommendation. And the wider point which I did want to make though and is probably more valid for this forum than the Joint Appointments Panel. And I'm very conscious as a member of the council that we're not just losing from the organisation a full-time member of staff in the chief exec, but somebody that's very experienced and somebody that's embedded in the organisation. And whatever the merits of the candidate that we're taking on and their abilities, it's not a like-for-like replacement. And I just wonder Sam, if you could perhaps reassure us how you will be ensuring that staff are sufficiently supported and the council's able to respond to the challenges moving forward? And also how you will be ensuring that this appointment is interim? We all know that senior positions inevitably take a long time for the recruitment period and then the interview process and then any notice period for a successful candidate. If it's six months from the date of appointment, that's still quite a tall order to turn that all around within six months. And so how will we know that or have confidence that this is an interim appointment? Thank you Chairman.
Leader, would you like to respond and then I'll assure councillor Jeremy of the recommendation amendment? Yeah.
Thanks Chairman. So I'll try and work backwards on councillor Jeremy's question. So it will be an interim appointment because I'm hopeful that the chairman will allow us to add a point C into the recommendations contained within that the, the fixed term date is until the 31st of March 2021. In relation to, I think I understood the question correctly Chairman, that the wider staffing impact, I would say that both Max and Rob throughout the pandemic have worked immensely closely with the outgoing chief executive to ensure that all of our staff were looked after as a duty of care but a moral obligation as well and they have done a sterling job. And Max and Rob continue to do that on a day-to-day basis as they would pre-COVID-19. In relation to the, the moving forward, Max and Rob have taken up at most of the meetings and engagements previously undertaken with the chief executive. Some of them have passed to myself as the leader. But in doing so, Max and Rob have got complete operational and strategic oversight of the authority and the workforce, ensuring that the workforce are looked after and able to undertake their, their duty and have got the equipment and the environment to do so. And I meet with Max and Rob both weekly on a, on a, on a Monday morning for several hours to go through the organisation and the outputs and any concerns or actions arising. And then myself, Lord Porter from South Holland and the three directors across both authorities also meet weekly on a Thursday morning to go over any issues concerning both authorities and the wider partnership position. And I think this detailed open conversation throughout the pandemic Chairman and what we're doing continuing forward gives me security. and what we're doing continuing forward, gives me security and hope it gives members security that we are doing everything we can to protect our workforce and our staff.
Thank you, Leader. Um councillor Jeremy, I'm just going to read the um amended recommendation that I've been given to reassure you. I'm not going to stop any further questions, but I just want to read it to you now because it's um now says, appoint Nathan Elvery for a six-month period commencing from the date of appointment, and that this appointment date is to be agreed by the Leader of Breckland Council and the Leader of South Holland District Council. So we've we've simplified it now, but bought in that six-month um period. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Chairman. With that change, I'm happy with the recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments, please?
And I have um councillor Nun.
Right. Councillor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I was merely going to say, uh well, A, thank you for the panel, or thank you to the panel for coming together at such short notice to deliberate and make a recommendation to us on this point. And then, secondly, having listened to Terry Jeremy and Mike Brendel to ask that I move the recommendation as submitted to us on the report with the amendment as suggested by yourself, um and I hope that somebody else will second that.
Thank you councillor Nun. If there are no other questions, I will ask for a seconder.
No, Chair, there are there are questions first.
Right.
Um I have councillor Borrit and then councillor Bert.
All right. And I can see councillor Atewell's hand up as well, okay. Okay councillor Borrit, over to you.
Well, for the record, Madam Chairman, I'm happy to second councillor Nun's proposal. Uh but if you are going to take further questions, I would like to say a couple of things. Firstly is, I'm very glad that we have all agreed that this meeting is properly and legally constituted, that the required times and required notices have been given by the officers, that the due diligence was done by the panel, and that what we're being asked to do here today is um either endorse or not the decision already made by that panel and not to interview or scrutinise uh in detail the candidate. Um we are here to accept or reject, which the members of the Council are quite at liberty to do to their own personal choice. But I do not like the tone of some of the questions because uh it is not a comfortable place around um uh character assassination of an individual who is acting in good faith. I do think the role is very important because actually it is the strategic questions that need to be dealt with that aren't part of the day job of the officers and directors that get missed, and they're vital to the performance of the Council going forward. So this role is very important. I would be quite happy to proceed without um the fixed term on the appointment because I am sure that the Leader and the Cabinet will decide that it is not a suitable permanent arrangement, um because actually the uh capacity at the top will need to be increased. But it is a very good, an excellent, short-term appointment. So I'm not concerned about that, but I'm happy to endorse and accept the altered recommendation. But I don't think that it's a key or an important recommendation. I think the key work has already been done by the committee, and I certainly support um the recommendations from the committee uh and councillor Nun's proposal. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you councillor Borrit. Uh councillor Bert.
Thank you, Chairman. Um I think the this matter of this particular document seems to have been uh pushed under the carpet. Um it's perfectly, we're perfectly entitled to discuss this in open session um when I am quoting directly from a government-published document, and it clearly has issues around the decisions that we are making today. I mean, from the top down, a lack of organisational self-awareness and refusal to accept criticism. This is relevant, and I had not had a chance to review this properly in terms of making this decision. I have no idea how relevant this is, but it certainly has some relevance. We I cannot see how we can just march our way forward um without considering this. It seems to be uh dissap from your agenda.
Thank you councillor Bert. Uh councillor Atewell.
Thank you, Chair. Sam, could I just ask you, I've got two or three short questions, please, that I hope you can help me out with. So the first one is, uh why was there only one candidate? Is this somebody that we've actually gone out and headhunted uh for this role? Or was it just that we only had one apply? Um and also, if we agree to appoint this person, will they be on the payroll of the authority? Or will that appointment be a contracted role uh through his management company? I noticed from your CV that he he's got his own management company. So are we employing him uh effectively as a contracted out position? Or is it direct employee to the Council? And much has been made about due diligence and the committee, but I'd like to know what due diligence has been done. This is, this has obviously been done at great next speed. So what what have you done to satisfy yourselves as a committee that this person is the right person for this role? That's what I'd really want to get to the nub of for me, please, thank you.
Thank you, Leader.
Thanks, thanks Chairman. So uh the individual was headhunted uh via Pena. Uh so Pena was given a specification on what our needs were, and that was done in conjunction with both leaders of both authorities, Chairman. Uh he is not a paid employee of Breckland Council, nor is it being done through his company. It's being contracted through Pena, which I mentioned earlier, Chairman, is a uh uh well-regarded and nationally-recognised uh contractor who employs um individuals of this experience and these sort of positions. And in your third uh question, Chairman, uh the individual was asked questions about their past, which was in the public domain. The panel had the opportunity to ask those questions and a response was given. Um due diligence was undertaken um in so far as an organisation such as Pena would not put forward an individual who has left an organisation through behaviour which is not becoming of an individual of public office.
Thank you very much.
Uh Chairman, I have councillor Brindle.
Right. Councillor Brindle, over to you.
Chairman, I I think Sam's given a very good answer. Just to be clear, the panel as such confined itself to the interviewing process as uh Tom has described. So I wouldn't necessarily describe that as due diligence. That was, as Sam pointed out, done somewhere else. So I don't want the comment made by councillor Borrit to be seen as as hard evidence because he wasn't actually there. Uh it was done on a sep- separate basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers? Julie, Theresa, Atewell. Right, okay councillor Atewell.
Thank you. So just to clarify two points. You said, Sam, that a specification was drafted up for the person that you for the role that you're specifically looking for. Um forgive me, but I don't recall seeing what that specification is. So I can't decide whether that matches up with this guy's CV. Um so is that something that you could send to members so we could see what that specification was? Um and also, coming back to this due diligence point. So taking up with what councillor Brindle has said, and he's quite right, I'm sure, and and reading through the minutes of the the um meeting and the panel, that you stuck to some rigid questions, um and then there was a more informal question and answer session towards the end. But that's not due diligence. So I do ask the question again. What was it? Did we, have we relied on Pena to do the due diligence? Are they guaranteed to you that they've done the due diligence? Or is that something that we're we're appointing this person subject to satisfactory references? Um I'm just concerned that the interview probably went very well. A person can interview uh very well. But what work has been done to check that he's good at the role and we've got references in place? Or have we sought references for this person? That's what I really, I would get, I would class as due diligence. What have we done to say this person can actually do this role? Um and, you know, he can provide satisfactory references. I'm sure that was a prerequisite for any uh employment or a contract role.
Leader.
Thanks, thanks Chairman. Um in relation to uh the specification, uh as councillor Atewell will know, um it's not my place as a politician to write the bait and the terms of reference um for any officer of the Council. It was uh the Leader of South Holland District Council and myself who wrote the requirements we needed for this strategic advisor for both councils moving forward, and that was then pulled together through um both HR teams at both councils together to form the final specification and requirements needed for this type of role. In relation to due diligence, uh councillor Atewell i- is right in so far as the fact that the panel has not gone into vast detail eh in relation to his past, or neither has any uh appointment panel gone into the detail of any employee of this Council's past. That's undertaken either directly via the HR team, if they're in uh an employee of this Council, or via the contractor who is supplying that individual for the Council's requirement. And I refer back to that this is a contracted appointment via Pena. Uh I think, Chairman, just to add some clarity, that I don't think anybody in turn is questioning the ability of this Joint Appointments Panel and the recommendations contained within here. And I will refer back to the recommendation. This is either for the Council to approve or reject the recommendation. But I just want to stress again, Chairman, to to colleagues uh that this is not an appointment of the Chief Executive and is a very specific role undertaken, the statutory functionality of the Head of Paid Service across two councils during the middle of a pandemic, but more importantly, Chairman, creating that capacity as the strategic advisor for both councils looking forward in a post-COVID world.
Thank you, Leader. Um do we have any more speakers?
Sorry, Madam Chairman, we have councillor Atewell and then councillor Bert.
Right, I will allow you one more comment each, please. Councillor Atewell first.
Sam, thank you for that answer, but you didn't give me an undertaking to send me the specification. You said that you wrote the requirements jointly with Lord Porter and then HR put the requirements together. Will you give an undertaking to send those requirements, albeit maybe under the line? Will you give an undertaking to send that to members, please? So we can see what it is that actually you're asking this person to do. Thank you.
Thank, thanks Chairman. I um being honest, uh councillor and Chairman, I don't know if I'm permitted to do that. Uh this is the first time I've presented a um uh this type of report as a councillor to committee, or sorry, to Council, and I'll need to defer to uh Maxi Mahoney or Mark Stinson over that. That can be made available to councillors.
Thank you, Leader. Uh Max or Mark?
Um yeah, thank you, Chairman. Um in terms of the specification, you're just talking about a job description of what we're asking the individual to do. We can certainly drop that over to all members to have a look at. That was something that was obviously provided to the panel for them to be able to make their decision. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And councillor Bert.
So again, we're getting information retrospectively. Um we're gonna, presumably, we're gonna have to make a decision before we've even seen it. But my point, you 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 seem to be putting a lot of emphasis on Pena and how good they are at doing this. But have you actually looked at the document that they sent over? I've got the CV in front of me. Somebody clearly can't drive a word processor because it's still in American English. They've used a spacebar to tab things out. How much confidence do we have that these people are credible?
Councillor Bert, I must, and everybody else, this is a um this is a responsibility we hand to officers to manage, and this is why we have a joint panel. And I've sat on one of those before. Under normal circumstances, if um a senior post has become vacant, members would be invited to meet them. And several of us will will remember, and often the interviews have been at King's Lynn, the halfway point, and we've gone over and we've had an informal lunch or cup of coffee with um prospective candidates so that the members can have some feedback. But we are in different times. We need to work to quote the Leader at pace. We need to get things going so that this Council can continue. Now, at this stage, I'm going to ask um for a vote. I've I've got a proposer, I've got a seconder, I will read the recommendation again, and I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. So the recommendation is to appoint Na-
I'm I'm there, I do apologise, Chairman. We had councillor Borrit still had his hand up.
Oh, I beg your pardon, I didn't see you. Quickly then, councillor Borrit.
Thank you. I just think that we're going in ever-decreasing circles with councillor Bert because he's now saying he wants to see the specification of how Pena was selected in order to read the specification, how then Pena then selected the candidate who would um and he was saying, how can we be sure that Pena is a good organisation? I mean, quite frankly, thi- this is, we're we're going to be, you know, this, here here lies madness. I I do think, Madam Chairman, I support your, um I I didn't know when I put my hand up that you were going to go to the vote, but I do think it's high time we did go to the vote.
Thank you very much. So the recommendation is to appoint Nathan Elvery for a six-month period commencing from the date of appointment, and that this appointment date is to be agreed by the Leader of Breckland Council and the Leader of South Holland District Council. If you are, we have a proposer who was councillor Nun, and we have a seconder councillor Borrit for that recommendation. So now I'd like a show of hands, please. Please put your hands up clearly if you are in favour.
Excuse me, I thought we were having a roll call vote, a roll call vote? Excuse me, I thought we were having a roll call vote.
You're right, sorry, my mistake, it's been a long day. Um Julie, sorry, could you do a roll call vote for me?
Thank you. Mr Ashby.
Agreed.
Mr Askew. Mr Atewell.
Abstain.
Mr Bambridge.
Or.
Mr Bert.
Against.
Mr Borrit.
For.
Councillor Bowes.
Or.
Brindle.
We are assured that this candidate is not dealing with staff. I therefore have confidence in his suitability, so that's a yes.
Thank you. Miss Bushel.
For.
Mr Carter.
Uh that's a four.
Thank you. Councillor Marion Chapman Allen.
Or.
Mr Sam Chapman Allen.
Four.
Mr Clark.
abstaining reluctantly, thank you.
Mr Claussen.
Or.
Mr Coleman. Mr Cowan.
Or.
Mrs Crane.
For.
Mrs Dale.
Or.
Mrs Dowling.
Or.
Mr Duffield. Mr Digan.
Or.
Mr Eagle.
Or.
Mr Git-, oh, sorry, Mrs Gray. Mr Harvey.
Or.
Mr Hewitt.
Or.
Mrs James.
Abstain.
Mr Jeremy.
Or.
Councillor Kaddell. Mr Kittle Morris.
Or.
Mr Kai Bird.
Or.
Mr Ian Martin.
Or.
Mr Keith Martin.
Or.
Mrs Monument. Mr Morton.
Abstain.
Mr Nen.
Or.
Mr Nun.
Or.
Mr Oliver.
Or.
Mr Robinson.
Or.
Mr Sherwood. Mr Sherwood?
Four.
Mrs Suggit?
Four.
Miss Taylor?
Four.
Mrs Turner?
Four.
Mrs Webb?
Four.
Mr Wilkin?
Or.
And Mr Wilkinson?
Four.
Thank you, chairman. That's carried.
Julie, yes, that recommendation is approved. Thank you very much. Now, I have one item of urgent business. The chief executive is the sole proper officer for the purposes of signing and issuing summonses to meetings of the full council committees and subcommittees. I consider that the appointment of a replacement proper officer should be considered as a matter of urgency, because the existing chief executive has left the authority, and there are no other appointed proper officers for the purposes of signing and issuing summonses. I therefore recommend that all existing directors, and for clarification, that's Maxine O'Mahony, Robert Walker and Christine Marshall, be appointed as the proper officers for the purposes of signing and issuing summonses under schedule 12 to the Local Government Act of 1972. Do I have a proposer for that recommendation, please? Councillor Nun, thank you. And a seconder councillor Jeremy, thank you very much. May I have a show of hands for those in favour of that? Anyone against? Any abstentions? Okay, Julie.
Sorry, chairman, that's carried. That was unanimous.
Thank you very much. So that recommendation has been agreed. Thank you all very much. And thank you very much for attending, and I wish you all a good afternoon.
Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, chairman.
Thank you.
Bye.